Okay, ladies and gentlemen. We seem to have our act together. So we're going to welcome everyone to today's regular meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council. And yes, this is a Tuesday because yesterday was a holiday and we all celebrated all of our dearly departed presidents. And we'll ask the city clerk to call the role.
Councilmember Terry.
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Yep.
Councilmember Pulapati is absent at this time but is expected to join us shortly around 6:00 PM. Vice Mayor Sander.
President.
Mayor Budge.
Here, thank you very much. Stacy, do you want to read all of the important language?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting replays on Friday, February 24th at 6:00 PM and Monday, February 27th at 1:00 PM. The meeting can also be viewed at youtube.com/metrocable14. A DVD copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department. And a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. We're going to invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and to remain standing as we welcome back Julie Steinbach from United Methodist Church for an invocation. Could we ask Chief Haverdy to lead us? As we welcome him back.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are gathered here this evening to keep Rancho Cordova a great place to live, work, and play. You have gifted us with abundant wisdom and talent to tackle our city's issues, encourage us to support each other and treat everyone with respect, motivate us to reach competent decisions that will positively affect our community. Let us rejoice in our diversity and continue to push for equitable solutions to benefit all of our city residents. In your name we pray, amen.
Thank you, Julie. Please be seated. New employee introductions.
I'm looking for Corinne. Is Corinne in the room?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Budge, Vice Mayor Sander, and council members. It's a privilege to be here this evening. I'm Corinne Hayden. I'm administrative assistant in the Public Works Department and longtime Rancho Cordova resident. And I'm delighted this evening to introduce Katrina Kulvik, our new administrative assistant in the Public Works Department. Katrina has a bachelor's degree from CSU Sacramento where she really fine tuned her proofing and writing skills. She also comes to us with integrity and upholds the city values. She's a pleasure to work with. Katrina.
Hi. I joined the Public Works team about four months ago. My previous background has been in administrative functions, human resources functions, customer service. So I'm really thrilled to be part of the team. It's been a pleasure to work with everybody in the different divisions. And I am excited to continue on and just be part of a city that is working towards great things.
Welcome, Katrina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're tall, so we're gonna put the podium up.
Don't rub it in.
I'm Stacy Lightner, city clerk and executive assistant in the city manager's office. And I'm excited to introduce to you Haley Arata. Haley is joining us in the city clerk's department as a deputy city clerk. And she is joining us from the secretary of state. And I'm going to go ahead and let her introduce herself.
Hello. As Stacy mentioned, my name is Haley. I am coming from the secretary of state's office. I've worked in elections administration for a number of years now. I'm also pursuing a master's of public administration at the Sacramento campus for the University of Southern California. So I'm very excited to continue my career, building my career in public service. I'm very thrilled to be part of a very hardworking team. I've only been here for about a week and a couple of days, but it's very clear. I'm very happy to be with the city clerk's office and to serve the folks of Rancho Cordova.
Thank you, Haley. Okay, with that, we will move into public comment. Stacy, do we have anyone signed up in public comment?
Yes. So I will go ahead and start with the speaker cards that I have received. We'll start with Dan Haverdy. Following Dan will be Frank Hall. Following Frank will be Fiza Mogul. And you'll have up to three minutes. And there is a clock at the podium.
Thank you.
Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor Budge. Thanks for having me here this evening. Council members, it's good to see you tonight. City manager, you and I had a conversation when it was cold and stormy a couple of months ago. And staff members and members of the public. My name is Dan Haverdy. I'm the interim fire chief for the Sacramento Metropolitan Fire District. I'm returning to SAC Metro. I worked for Metro Fire for 20 years. And then I was the fire chief in other cities in Northern California. I come back to Metro Fire at a great time in its history. I'll be here for a transition time period of six to 12 months. And you can take about a month and a half off the tail end of that. I started in January. This evening, I brought with me, I'm delighted to work with the gentleman alongside me from my executive staff. To my left is deputy chief Ty Bailey. Ty is our deputy chief of administrative services. And to my right is Adam Mitchell. Adam is our operations chief. And next to Adam is Joe Farica. Joe is the shift commander. We have three shifts at Metro Fire, A, B, and C. And Joe is, when we all go home, Joe's got the helm. So he's the fire chief for the day, for all intents and purposes. I just want to let you know that we are, continue to be excited to be your service provider for fire, emergency medical services, hazmat rescue, water rescue, helicopter rescue, all the services that Metro Fire, as an all-risk agency, can provide. And if there is anything that we can do for you as the leaders of this community, please let me know. We would be delighted to come and assist you in any way possible. You don't have to call 911 to get us. I'll leave my phone number with you. So if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them at this point, or if you have questions of my staff.
Thank you, Chief. Other questions for the chief?
No, just really appreciate everything you guys are doing. And if you guys didn't know this, when homeless calls, the majority of it are done by the fire. The fire and the police are the ones that have to handle that right now. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. We appreciate your coming and bringing your executive team with you.
My pleasure.
We look forward to talking to you tomorrow.
I'd love that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, guys.
I'm tall like you are. Good evening, everybody. Mayor Budge, council members. My name is Frank Hall. I live just over adjacent from where they built the new Sprouts in our city. And I'm actually coming to you and won't take a lot of your time tonight. Trying to see if I could find a good resource at the city, I outreach, and I'm gonna hopefully say these names right, although I'm sure I will butcher them. A nice lady in the Public Works Department named Dawn gave me the names of three people to contact regarding, there was some construction that took place around our neighborhood on the 7th or 8th of February. And that was laying down, I think, some fiber optic cable. Maybe we're looking at a new service provider to come to this area and give a little competition to our current carriers. But nonetheless, there's, I guess, do not go into too much detail. There was some unfinished business and some not really good-looking work that they did. And so I contacted the city and this lady named Dawn, who was very helpful, gave me the name of three people. I emailed them and have not heard back. So I'm thinking maybe I contacted the wrong folks. There was a, I'm gonna say this name wrong. It's spelled Q-U-O-C and the last name is N-H-A-M. Quoc? Coke? Nam? Someone whose name I didn't get, unfortunately. And the first initial is D and the last four of the email is F-A-D-L. I do remember, I think that it was a lady, not a man. So that might give a little bit of help to it. And then a general email called encroachmentpermits@cityofranchocordova.org. But anyway, I sent this on February 14th, Valentine's Day. And outreach, but have not heard back yet. So I'm hoping that I might be able to get a resource from you all for somebody to...
So Frank, several of people are here tonight. However, in the back of the room, we have our Public Works Director, Albert Stricker, and he would be happy to talk to you.
Okay, thank you. And before I leave, I wanted to give these, Stacy, if I could give these to you to pass around. See the city members?
I know there have been concerns about the length of the construction and what seems to be the potential results, but it'll all be resolved.
That's good to know.
And Dahlia has just walked into the back also. So if you all want to talk to them.
Gives me some hope. I just want to show you, the top is what was a very good job. And the picture under it's what probably, given that my father and my whole family is in construction and we built shopping centers and commercial real estate for years, we probably would have done a different job, I guess I want to say, to be very politically correct. Nonetheless, thank you for your time, you all. And I will go back and talk with these people you referred me to.
Thank you, Frank.
Appreciate it.
Following Frank is Fiza. And following Fiza will be James Garcia and then Helen Wayland-Bachar.
Hi, I'm Fiza Mogul from Lincoln Village. Tonight is my one-year anniversary. It's been exactly one year since the city approved my request to pass an anti-black racism resolution authored by black hands, hearts, and minds. Let me say that again. Exactly one year ago during Black History Month, this city approved my request to pass an anti-black racism resolution authored by black folks. A whole year has passed since we showed up with the Black made resolution in our hands and the city slammed the door in our faces, refusing to work with us. A whole year of the city reneging on their public vote of approval, which was made in this very room from those very seats. A whole year of watching the city make further racial missteps towards the black community, including their favorite move, tokenizing. The city loves tokenizing so much that they're tokenizing their few black employees as we speak on the city's Black History webpage, because they keep forgetting it's racist to do that. So tonight, on the anniversary of the anti-black racism resolution that the city publicly approved but privately killed, and in honor of the Black History theme of Black resistance, I want to celebrate this book. It's a book of poetry called Something About Physics by Jordan K. Tapu. Jordan graduated from Cordova High in 2020. She was the president of the Black Student Union at Cordova when the kids, mostly black girls, began speaking publicly about their concerns with policing on campus. This was around the time we all learned the names Elijah Tofino and George Floyd. But instead of trying to empathize with those students, the city designed a whole media campaign to counter-message the Black Student Union. The city used black boys as tokens in their media messaging against these black girls. As a public agency acting on behalf of the people, the city of Rancho Cordova directed staff, time, and resources towards drowning out the voice of black girls who dared to speak up. It was an unforgivable act, a misuse of taxpayer dollars, a horrible abuse of power, yet very much on-brand for the city of Rancho Cordova. Today, the black child they tried to bully into silence is a published author, and I am so flipping proud. Copies of Jordan K. Tapu's book, Something About Physics, are available for order at the Sacramento Public Library and on Amazon. Congratulations to Jordan for not letting the city of Rancho Cordova snuff out her spark. To the city council, I hope you enjoyed learning this little nugget of local black history because now it's part of your legacy. I'll close out with this quote, "The most disrespected person in America is the black woman. The most unprotected person in America is the black woman. The most neglected person in America is the black woman." Malcolm X. And apparently, that's still the case in Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thank you, Fiza.
Next speaker is James Garcia.
Good evening, council. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just have a couple questions more so that I know cannot be answered at this time. But biggest one is, where does the city stand on redistricting for city council elections? Are we going to have districts like, just happened up in Folsom, California, for example, where people such as Fiza could actually have somebody in her neighborhood represent us on the city council? Right now, I'm pretty sure I know where most city council members reside, and it's not really evenly spread out amongst the city. So that's just one of my big questions, is if that's on the works, are we being sued by the state, perhaps, to get that done? I don't know. Another question is, where in the city can we find and build more local affordable housing for our residents that have that starter job, for example, working at Starbucks? Having most recent apartment complexes up on the vote or market rate? We don't have anywhere, that I've at least noticed, for somebody who's just starting out, trying to move out of their parents' house, anything else in the neighborhoods. Try Anatolia. New home development out there, the ranch? Wait, $700,000. That's a little high for somebody who just got a job. It's not really affordable. The only places for that seem to be in our, quote-unquote, older parts of town, Rancho Cordova, Lincoln Village. We got it there, maybe over Cordova Meadows area, kind of older part of town. Where in the city are we building that new legacy for everyone to be? So I know you can't answer those today, but thank you.
Thank you, James.
Hi, Helen Bachar. And I'm going to talk tonight. For every year, I've been talking about procedures, procedures. We need to have things, our people representing the city or working in the city, representing the public, aren't properly trained, in my opinion. And my opinion is based on the fact that I've got, what is it, almost 36 years in training in the Air Force and in the United States Postal Service. So what I'm going to talk about tonight is, I made two phone calls today. I made a phone call to Micah and I made a phone call to Stacy. And I was pretty animated in them. I was pretty to the point. And it all regards, is revolving around a 21-acre lot. In 2018, Linda, you made the comment when Pappas out of Illinois came in and wanted to put low-income housing and commercial on that property. It was done away with because you didn't want low-income housing there. My question is, where on the city website, when we have a piece of land that's available to develop, where do you keep the history? So we're now fighting with the Trumark Group. And in the little group I'm in, I'm in charge of SB 330. And the problem I'm having with SB 330, on December 16th, 2022, the document was less than 100 pages, as recorded. Now, on the website, the document is more than 100 pages. And nowhere on the title does it say revised. If you go into the court system and you submit a document, that's the first one. Anytime you submit anything dealing with changes, it's a revision. There's, this document is misleading to the public as is. I want the city's website to be inclusive. If we have a piece of land, it should have all the stuff in it. And it's because if we had procedures and people were properly trained, we wouldn't be having litigations on this. Because right now, you have two parts of Rancho Cordova that are fighting because the people in their positions have not fully discharged their duties, as far as I'm concerned. But then I'm not in a public office anymore. I just think that that website should be user-friendly. And anytime there's a change, when a person submits a building request and there's addendums to it, I think they're in red when there are changes. So my question is, why doesn't the city have documents that clearly let the people know when changes are done? Because I don't think I should have to go through every revision that changes pages, changes words in it to find out where it is. You're forcing us to learn your jobs, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Helen.
The next speaker is Kathy Birch. Following Kathy will be Brenda Augustin.
Good afternoon, Rancho Cordova City Council and everybody. Thank you. I'm okay, I think.
I'm not starting your time yet.
I'm okay. Thank you. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts with you. Ladies and gentlemen, you have the opportunity to become heroes with regards to saving a precious jewel of unbuilt-upon land near the American River, the land formerly owned by the Cassis property and currently owned by Trumark. Trumark's first proposal to develop this property was submitted to you in April of 2019. Almost four years later now, no public input has been solicited by you. In fact, it seems that anytime members of the city council were approached by nearby residents, we were told that you could not comment because it could be viewed as a bias on your part when the project comes up for review. Now, as of mid-December, Trumark is claiming that because of inactivity of Rancho Cordova Building Department, they are withdrawing their prior submission and submitting a new application to the state of California citing low-income housing needs to support their change. Rancho Cordova does not need low-income housing in this area to fulfill its quotas. The public easement hiking and riding trail granted in 1973 that connects Miradell Rio to Sterling Park Drive does not even appear on Trumark's proposal. Planning homes in a floodplain and justifying by bringing in 10 feet of dirt makes no sense. Remember the Ocean condo complex in Florida that collapsed a few summers ago? The water eroded the foundation. So putting 10 feet of dirt and putting homes on them, they better be houseboats. The recent storms and flooding should be a big reminder of the flood hazards. Please become heroes, solicit input from the residents and friends to this area before the decision is taken from you and left to the state of California. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
I hear which one. Good evening. I and other citizens value the American River Parkway. We want to know when the city of Rancho Cordova's code enforcement will restore the damage done to the trees, repairing habitat, drainage easement, and public easements and trails on the old Cassis property. The American River Parkway protection is also a city duty under the city general plan. As you know, the 41-acre Cassis site, which includes 20 acres within the Central Valley Flood Protection Board designated floodway of the American River, has been repetitively cleared and graded over the past two years without the SEQA process required by Rancho Cordova municipal code. RCMC states that clearing and grading requires a permit. It states grading and erosion control permits are subject to the requirements of the SEQA. The owner's activity also required a tree protection permit under RCMC and storm water pollution prevention plan. None of the city's own code regulations were followed for the clearing and grading in the riverbed of the American River. This was done by the owner in anticipation of his 2020 proposed development. Knowing of the impending application and being notified repetitively of the ongoing clearing and grading without a permit, the city has allowed the damage to repeatedly continue for almost two years. Written inquiries to Darcy Goulard prompted by her January 11th, 2023 response that Trumark had on December 21st, actually dated December 19th, submitted a new preliminary application form for a housing development project pursuant to SB 330, the Housing Crisis Act of 2019. And they withdrew their previous application. Said withdrawal, among other things, was due to the city saying it would require NEIR for the property. Neither the new development plan nor the prior application honored either the city's specific or general plans, which state the building in a floodway is not allowed. It is this floodway that the city, despite repeated notification for two years, has allowed to be destroyed without a permit and in violation of SEQA requirements. The cease and desist order issued to Trumark after the illegal grading in April 2022 has neither been honored with fines commensurate with years of intentional clearing and grading without a permit, nor enforced with the required restoration. RCMC violations section relative to tree damage clearly states that a permit is required for such grading and that restoration of damaged property must occur. These code violations and restoration guidelines have been cited and brought forth by citizens many times.
Please wrap up your comments.
Three minutes to highlight these items does not afford opportunity. I would also like to know what progress has taken place to investigate the cost of a footbridge over the Ruater Canal to complete the recorded public easement granted and recorded in 1973. By incorporating in 2003, the city of Rancho Cordova took on the duty to protect these public easements. And a motion was passed at the November 2022 meeting.
Thank you.
And thank you. I'll be back later since we can't get answers.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Anybody else?
Those are the speaker cards that I received. The city did also receive one written email from Fiza Mogul. And that email has been distributed to the city council. It has been placed on the city's website and it is placed in the back in a binder for public comment. I am looking at Zoom and I do not see any hands that are raised.
Okay. Thank you very much. Then we'll go on to council reports and we'll note that Siri has joined us. Donald.
Let's see. Had the opportunity to attend the SAC Realtors, Sacramento Association of Realtors dinner crab feed over at the Citrus Heights Community Center on Saturday. And I know we're going to talk about the Mills Crossing, whatever we're going to name this at some point. But it is really striking to think the size of that community center, and it's one of the larger places to have a dinner. I think they oversold it. It was really tight in there. But to think that we're looking at something more than 10 times the size of, or no, five times, I guess, the size, but five or six times. It's 20,000 square feet, if I remember, or 25, and we're looking at 125. So it's just really impressive to think of what they built and what, like, I think when we started talking about the Mills Crossing and something even close to that would be great. And the fact that we're looking at something so much bigger is really, really exciting. Got a chance to go visit the Rancho Cordova food locker and see kind of, not only kind of how they're reforming and reimagining the work that they do there, a lot of the collaboration that they have with the grocery stores in town. Unfortunately, they can't use the old part of the food locker right now. It was damaged and hopefully we can help them find a new spot pretty soon. We're in the throes of our cap-to-cap community resources team and working with Simon and Company. For those of you who are planning to attend, our last steering committee said that I want to say three-quarters of all of the registrations have been paid for. So if you are planning on going, I would register this week or you may not get to go at all. And lastly, I attended my first Los Rios Colleges Foundation Executive Board meeting. We have our actual board meeting this Friday. We have our actual board meeting this Friday. I guess when I filled out some questionnaire last year, I said I might be interested in it. And without much conversation, I ended up on the executive committee. So lots of fun. I will say that I believe we are still consistently one of the largest contributors, not only to Folsom Lake College every year through our Promise program, but it's one of the largest checks that the colleges in general get. So kudos to the city for all of our great work with Los Rios. That's it.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett?
Once again, Happy Black History Month. Though Black History doesn't just belong in one month, belongs in all months. Thank you for being strong and FISA coming up and saying what your heart feels. And hopefully, as a city, we can only get better from here with good training and understanding. Because the most important thing is that our community as a whole feels welcome here because Rancho Cordova does have one of the most diversity in African-Americans. I want them to feel safe and secure when they come to the city. That being said, went to the library authority. As everyone knows, we are in the black for Black History Month. Nailed it. No, but it is a good joke. Solid joke. We are profitable thanks to all the hard work that Linda had to go through. I honestly love when Linda finishes cleaning something up and I get to take over and claim it. But they are looking really hard about how they're going to help Rancho Cordova to build a library. And the problem is, is where? And out of all the new communities that are tilting up and where that makes the most sense? And do we want it to be like, they're even thinking like, should they take over one of the buildings? Because we have so much office space and turn it into an amazing library that would be across the street from on, you know, more on this, on the other side of Rancho, the older side of Rancho and kind of reform that? They have about 10 million bucks to give us with our money. We could probably make something amazing. Do we put it next to the new high school? I mean, like, where do we put this piece? And it can't just be a library anymore. It has to be worker space and education space. And a lot of people are turning into job depots where you can go get copies of your resume and make phone calls and actually have PO boxes. They're reimagining libraries. And I was like, well, that's amazing, and we want jobs. And so how do we kind of come together as maybe, you know, a job training center that the library can help come behind? And then, so, I mean, the future's on the, the future for Rancho Cordova when it comes to that kind of thing is bright. Because they realize that we're one of the one places that they're really not serving as well as they could. And then where do we actually really want it? Then that's kind of where we have to put a button in it. Second thing is, thank you to the Greater Sacramento Urban League for throwing, I remember when I first got here, we didn't have any events, and now we have that event. And I think that was a great starter. I always find it funny because I grew up with it, but Bible gospel music and the outfits they wear, always entertaining for me. No one fell on the ground because it's not that type of Baptist show, but dang it. I, like, it was, it was, when I went one and someone jumped up and it was next to me, it was my grandma, and she looked like she was dying, had a heart attack. And I was like, Mom, something's wrong. And then the pastor came down, he's like, get up! And then they got up, and I was like, what is happening? God, I love that. That was so entertaining. But that was awesome. The poetry thing was hype. So I haven't seen one of, I haven't seen a word. I like to call it word shows because really, it's just people talking their feelings through thing. And it was just, that was hot fire. And they came at different rooms. And then, of course, the comedian that picked on the police, which I thought was hilarious because he was in there being like, you can't arrest me because you're not supposed to today. It's one of those days, sorry. Do you remember what it was? What did he say? He said?
It's kind of when he pulled out of there not getting a ticket.
Yeah, he's like, you can't get a ticket right now because, you know, you're not allowed. It's a forgiveness day. And anyways, moving on. So that was awesome. I can only hope that we do more of that stuff. And like I was saying, I really want to go to other cities and see how they do Black History Month and inclusiveness and really touch off. Because I think we have a great start, and what Rancho's great about is taking other people's ideas, making it better and making it our own. And I haven't seen other cities and how they do it. So I'd love to see like Atlanta, Hotlanta, and see how they do it. See Washington DC how they do it. Because some of these guys have been doing it for years and have years of black legacy in it. And the cool part is, is the founder of California or one of the African-Americans that helped that is from Rancho Cordova. And like being said, all that stuff comes out of Rancho Cordova. And so it's one of those things, like, we don't have that kind of legacy that I can like do some artwork around and, you know, what would that look like for us? So I'm going to imagine some new stuff. I'm really going to try to put my head down and next year and see some cool things happening here. I mean, but just glad to be able to be a part of that. That's it.
Thank you, Garrett. Siri?
Thank you, council member. I must say, I did part of my master's in Louisville, Kentucky, and the African-American population over there is very colorful compared to here. Here, we're more, I think, subtle in the dressing, but it was really colorful back there. I did attend the Black History and Beyond event that was attended by council member Garrett and Mayor Linda. It was a really good show, and I must appreciate it, all the performance. And especially the one that, FISA, you actually put both your passions of biking and black history and put together History of Biking with Black. I think that was really nice. So that was a good event. We had people from Folsom also that attended. So then I attended their Folsom Legislative Event that was last week along with the Chamber President Diane and folks from Visit Rancho Cordova. And that was a really crowded mixer. So those are the two events that I attended between the last council meeting and now.
Thank you, Siri. David?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's been an incredibly busy couple of weeks for me. As most of you know, I have a senior in high school. And trying to keep up with all those sort of senior activities, including some of the psychology of this is the last time for fill-in-the-blank, tends to dominate our family calendar at this point. But I have been very active in some local activities. RCA had a meeting last week, and it was really gratifying. That's the Rancho Cordova Athletic Association. Last year, we kicked off a scholarship program that allowed literally any kid to play any sport if they couldn't afford it. There's some guidelines they follow, and through a city grant, we're able to accommodate any kid who wants to play any sport in Rancho Cordova, regardless of what their situation is. That was a great success last year. This year, the great success is connecting kids from their youth program to high school programs. So it's always been a goal of, you know, athletic programs everywhere. But our challenge has been that there's been a gap. You might fall off of the Little League roster, and then you wait three years, and then you show up in high school. Do you still have that motivation to play? Do you still feel like you have that opportunity? Or have you lost out on skills in the interim? All those sorts of challenges. Have you lost out on the leadership opportunity? Have you lost off your ability to have confidence in what you can do? All the things that sports brings, other than just athletic ability, suffer that same deficit. So we've had a bunch of coaching changes at Cordova High in the past year. And the remarkable thing, sitting around doing sort of like an audit, public audit meeting of all the youth programs, is how tied in with the high school many of them now are. The new football coach is completely tied in and shares a coaching staff with youth football. Baseball Coach at Cordova High is linked up to Little League. Soccer is linked up. We have some gaps that we need to work on. We do not have youth basketball in Rancho Cordova, outside of a great offering by one local church, but it's not a full-blown youth basketball program. But it was incredibly heartening to see how many activities did have that linkage. There are some programs out there that do not. Specifically, those offered by the Park District have no linkage to the high school. They tend to have a group of kids show up, pay to play for a period of time, but there's no linkage outside of that. So that's something we need to work on. But enormous progress in this. It was quite heartening, I think, to everybody there. I'm on the Regional Sand Board. As you know, I'm chair this year. We had a hearing a couple of weeks ago talking about our finances. And one thing that came up was how do we facilitate economic development, help people who are challenged in paying their bills or meeting the needs to upgrade their sanitation services? And what do we do about infill along corridors? And so a partnership has been established between Regional Sand and SECOG, looking specifically at the infill question in addition to, in addition to the others, trying to figure out how did you, for example, how could you, along Folsom Boulevard, as an example of a commercial corridor, eliminate the Regional Sand fee, eliminate the SAC sewer fee, eliminate the water company fees and the smud fees? Now, smud has a lot of ability to do that sort of assistance in economic development, but the other utilities have not. And so we have a committee established. There's been some work done. The first public meeting, I think, was in December. Regional Sand and SECOG, there are more of those coming up. And I'm hoping, by the time I'm done being chair of Regional Sand, that we can make an announcement about some other aggressive things we can do in that regard. Because as we know, it is more expensive to build something along Folsom Boulevard. And every jurisdiction has these commercial, old commercial corridors. It's more expensive to build something in that infill than to build something way out in the periphery in Greenfield. And that's exactly what we, as a community, do not need. We don't need everything constantly to be on the growing edge. We need the older part of the community being reinvested in as well and offer to equal economic access and opportunity compared to just the growing edge. So that impact of that program should be regional, not just for Rancho Cordova. But obviously, it's informed on my actions and knowledge here in Rancho Cordova. And finally, I was able to record, finally, the Rancho Cordova podcast they've been after me to do last week. I think it might be coming out this week. I'm not sure. But I'm looking forward to that. It's, if you guys have the opportunity to do it, have you done this, Linda? Micah, you did one? Yeah, that's what I thought. If you have the opportunity to do it, it is a great experience, and it's really important.
Did you do a filmed one or?
A filmed one. Yeah, it's really important to capture this, just for historical purposes, if nothing else.
Yeah.
So we know.
The first ones were simply taped.
Yeah. You have to go back. Well, you know, I think I talked to him for an hour and a half, and I felt like it probably could have been eight. You know, if we like, didn't constantly, it would have been really boring to listen to. But, you know, it was a lot of stuff in that amount of time. So I was able to do it, very happy to do it. Looking forward to hearing all of yours when you get them done, civic leaders out there in the community. I think it's a great addition to Rancho Cordova. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Actually, that news about SECOG and the commercial corridors is really welcome because the most that we've ever gotten from Regional Sand was credits to use an infill as opposed to paying full fees out in the greenfields. And you're absolutely right. Our biggest, all the people who support infill development, the biggest issues are the inadequacy of sewer and water and electric.
Exactly right. It's far more expensive to build infill than it is greenfield, the opposite of what it should be.
That, you know, that held up the target project for like a year and a half or so while they could upgrade the water lines to support a larger target building. So appreciate that. Like my colleagues, I did attend the Black History Month event and was really impressed at the people who came. And then I spoke to our kids at City Hall. Normally, when I speak to the kids at City Hall, I talk to them about the history of Rancho Cordova, just as I present that to the leadership class. But this time, they wanted to hear more about what we thought Rancho, what we thought was going to come up in Rancho Cordova this year. So I made for them the same presentation that I had made at the community council in January because they always invite the mayor to come and talk about what's coming up for the year in January. And really enjoyed it. The kids were extremely engaging. I meant to bring the statistics of who they are and where they're from, but there were, there's everything from eighth graders to seniors. Probably split evenly between Mitchell. I know there was a young lady from Mills, Cordova High, Pleasant Grove. And there was even somebody from a school in San Juan, which was kind of a surprise. But they were all over the board, and they were really engaged, and they asked terrific questions. So that's my report, and we'll turn it over to Micah for the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. I was really upset to not be able to make the Urban League event. I was actually traveling as part of the Cal City City Manager Conference. And as Councilmember Gatewood said, it's important for us to learn from others and improve and make it better. And actually, attended a couple of sessions on equity and diversity and those things. And I think that's something we're all very interested in and want to make sure that we do well. And so, among those other things, as far as learning from others, and not only do it well, but do it better than they did is always the goal. So, and learn from others. So with that, that's just my brief report. But I would like to hand it off to our city attorney and city clerk to talk about SB 2449.
AB 2449.
Thank you. We've talked about this a couple of times before, but just a quick reminder that the host of COVID-specific changes to the way city governments and local governments do Brown Act meetings is taking yet another step at the end of this month with the end of the COVID emergency declaration. And just a couple of quick reminders for the council that we will be transitioning to AB 2449 compliance. And that means that, that, starting at the first of the month, council members who wish to participate remotely, instead of just participating remotely, will need to participate remotely for one of two reasons. Either just cause, in which case you would notify the legislative body at the earliest possible opportunity, and for us, really, at least the week before, that there are circumstances that justify your remote participation. And those are things like childcare or caregiving that requires you to participate remotely, or a contagious illness that prevents you from participating, or a physical or mental disability, or travel while you are on official business. And in those cases, you will be able to simply notify us, the clerk and the city manager and I, and we'll make arrangements. And the second opportunity is for emergency circumstances. And in emergency circumstances, the member is actually making a request of the body to participate remotely. And those are things, and we'll add those requests at the very beginning of the meeting, right after the invocation and before presentations. And those are going to be things such as a family or medical, a physical or family medical emergency that would prevent you from participating in person. And I'm going to turn it over to Stacy to talk about some of the implementation details very briefly. And we will, of course, be reminding you about this as we go forward and gain experience in implementing it.
So under AB 2449, we need to have at least a quorum in a singular physical location. So as we know, most of our council meetings are here in the council chambers. We have had recently a special meeting in the American River Rooms. But we need at least a quorum, that would be at least three of you in a singular physical location. Second, should?
Can I clarify that? Because we got different direction from the Air District. That if we do the full Brown acted, tell you where we're going to be posted ahead of time, that counts as being present. That's not physically present, but that would be present, and that would count towards the quorum. Am I right?
Yeah, I think we will be providing additional guidance about whether or not these requirements, the 2449 opportunity to participate remotely is in addition to what you just described, the full traditional requirements in general. We think that it likely is, but we're, we are watching to make sure we see the evolving guidance.
I was going to say, the guidance from the Air District was any participant that fully complies with the remote Brown Act rules, which would be informing prior to the agenda going out, identifying where they're going to be, that it's a public place, and that it's posted 24 hours ahead of time at the site? Or is it 48 hours?
It's the normal posting.
So is it, is it three days ahead of time?
It can be.
Okay. But their interpretation of this, because they're actually, the Air District and trying to encourage people not to use their cars too much, they're actually encouraging the members that are further out in the county to utilize that and not attend in person. And their interpretation is anybody that does that and not using the emergency one where just, I'm going to zoom in or call in or whatever, that they would count towards the quorum count. So that's at least what they've advised us. So.
So we will note that, and we will look into that. Should a council member need to be remote for a regular council meeting, we would ask that you email the city clerk, myself, and copy the city attorney and the city manager just to make sure that we are all staying in the loop. If a council member needs to be remote for just cause, as the city attorney just mentioned, the city clerk, that would be myself, will, at the beginning of the meeting, ask you to please notify the city council of the reason that you need to be remote, briefly describing a brief description. And of course, we will let you do that. If a council member needs to be remote for an emergency circumstance, the city clerk will call upon the council member during the beginning of the meeting and allow you to make that request of your legislative body. Also, council members who participate remotely will need to make sure that they have both their audio and their. that they have both their audio and their cameras on. So there is a requirement that you be both, be able to be heard, and that we can see you. So be mindful of wherever you may be remotely to ensure that you have a strong, reliable Wi-Fi or internet connection. Moving in a vehicle could be tricky, and you could obviously lose connectivity.
And these are unfortunately circumstances where we would need to ask the mayor to pause the meeting if someone lost their connectivity. There could be, otherwise, they might not be allowed to participate in the end of the action, and we would need to stop the item.
And the city council holds two regular meetings per month, and council members can participate, obviously remotely, up to four meetings per calendar year. And the city attorney and I do anticipate bringing this back for further clarification and discussion as we continue to learn about the new laws that affect public meetings.
The four meetings, is that the sum of the above listed options, or is that in addition to?
Yeah, the losses that you can do, 2449, for a total of 20% of the regular meetings. So that equals four.
For us.
For us, with a couple of meeting cancellations.
Yeah.
In the total of those categories. Otherwise, I think there is the interpretation that we would default to the traditional teleconference. But again, that comes with a few extra requirements.
What's our average for regular meetings in a year? So, and this doesn't include like workshops and stuff, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it applies to regular meetings. That limit applies to regular meetings. So.
Traditionally, we're, I mean, we don't, we have some off, so like 24 a year or something?
Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two.
And I would agree with Donald. Most of us are hearing from different agency councils that this is in addition to the normal old Brown Act rules that several of our members and past members have taken advantage of, where they were traveling. So they posted their location on something remote.
And again, but those traditional rules require, still require a quorum in the jurisdiction. So the biggest take-home message for, I think, us is there will need to be a higher level of communication than there was in pure COVID.
You know, and that.
Don't make a, don't make a decision five minutes before time.
Yeah, well, and that, that may be the difference of how the Air District described it and what you just said, was they were basically suggesting, go meet at your city hall, stay in your town, go to a public place, but I'm in the Air District's jurisdiction when I'm sitting here, not when I'm in the Lake City's back east or something. So that may be part of the nuance that, because I remember when they brought it up, I'm like, nobody's told us that at city council, but that makes a lot of sense. So we could remote, hmm, but could we, well, then we'd have to be home.
We're just, as a group of professionals and council members, we're going to need to plan ahead a bit.
I'm sure it'll all work out. Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
We're going to move into our consent calendar. Consent calendar items are deemed to be remote unless somebody wants to pull an item. Colleagues, we have items 9.1 through 9.10. Is there anything that you all need to have pulled? Hearing none, we will acknowledge that item 9.2 is revised to eliminate some duplicate language. So we'll entertain a motion for 9.1 through 9.10 with the revised language of 9.2.
Mayor Budge, I do want to acknowledge that the city clerk's office did receive public comment.
Okay, which one?
9.2 and 9.3.
Okay, then we'll pull.
It's just a written public comment.
Oh, okay. All right.
So I would just like to acknowledge that Angel Ball sent in a written public comment for 9.2 and 9.3. That has been distributed to the city council. It has been made available to the public on the website and is in the public comment binder in the back of the council chambers.
Great. Thank you, Stacy. Okay, do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you very much. Our consent public hearing items, again, are deemed to be non-controversial and can be approved unless somebody wishes to pull it. Does anybody have any concerns about 10.1? Then we'll open the public hearing and ask if there's any public comment about 10.1.
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment for item 10.1, and I do not see any hands that are raised in Zoom.
Okay, that has to do with abandoning of right of way, has to do with abandoning of right of way. So we'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion on 10.1.
Move, approval.
Second.
Thank you. Stacy, call the roll.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes. Moving into public hearing items, Stacy, will you read the title of 11.1, please?
Logistics Center, a Rancho Cordova Major Design Review, Project Number PLND 10210015.
Thank you. So we'll open the, we'll open the public hearing. Is there a staff presentation on this one? Probably not.
This recommendation is to continue it to March 6.
Okay, and we will ask the city clerk if there is any public comment on 11.1.
Yes, there is. So we will start with Kate Carroll. We'll start with speaker cards and those who are present in the room. Kate Carroll will be first. Following Kate Carroll is James Garcia. Following James will be Sarah Malone, and then Marilyn Metzger.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kate.
Sorry. Hi, Sarah. Thank you again for letting me speak once again, and it's about warehouses, obviously. Over the past several months, I've heard a lot of people in the council mention how the importance of bringing good-paying jobs to Rancho, and that warehouses will help in that goal. Today, I received some data from a colleague who's challenging huge logistics centers in the community of Riverside, California, which throws that, which throws that assumption into question. The inland empire has one of the lowest unemployment rates in California and the nation, stemming from a proliferation of huge distribution centers, we know that, often controlled by out-of-state entities. Back in 2001, the county of Riverside had a GDP, gross diagnostic product, of 64% of the US and 52% of California's GDP, excuse me. However, by 2022, Riverside County's position had deteriorated to only 59% of the US GDP and 40% of the GDP of California, alarming numbers given the success of the logistic industry. I mention this because even with impressive job growth brought on by logistics centers, they tend to be relatively low-paying jobs as compared to those in other parts of our state and nation. Those numbers should be alarming, and are to the Southern California Association of Governments Economic Report, which goes on to discuss how the logistic industry will likely go through a transformation as advances in automation and artificial intelligence displace workers. It also warns there will be further costs from the expansion of the logistics sector if the result of the expansion means that there will be less industrial space available in the future for industries which are able to add more value to our economic bottom line. 80% of logistics centers in the Riverside area are not owned by corporations from the state, not unlike which would be true of a logistics center. Profits from such industries will line the pockets of people in other states. It would, in essence, mean that we pay the cost of moving goods through our neighborhood in terms of air quality, life quality, and traffic, rather than having businesses that actually benefit our local economy. And I ask you, is the question, is this the future we want for Rancho Cordova? Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. James, I think James is next.
Good evening, council. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I would like to ask when the city plans to fulfill the obligation set forth in the Z-Spa to have Zimphandell Drive fully realized as a thoroughfare. It has been known to the city for months, if not years, that the city plans to have development in the Stone Creek neighborhood to include large-scale warehouses. Yet the infrastructure to support such endeavors have not been implemented. This lack of oversight to plan for such businesses is going to harm the lifestyles of those residents who call Stone Creek their homes. The residents will be forced to bear the hardships of constant road repairs and all that comes with such activities. Not only will they have to worry about the increased level of potholes, but will be subjected to the constant need to have lane closures, harmful chemical gases released by the repair vehicles, a backlog of idling vehicular noise and toxic fumes from those vehicles awaiting to continue on their pass. Zimphandell Drive is slated to be classified as a thoroughfare, and with that implementation would be constructed in a manner that would help mitigate the damages to the road, such as having an H18 road as opposed to an H17 road. Has the Public Works Department considered the damage being done to the roads by not performing this upgrade? I have heard from the city staff that the developers of projects pay into a fund to pay for road repairs, but this does not prevent the health risks of those repairs to the residents that live and breathe in the unnecessary overabundance of repairs to an inferior road. Many of us have dealt with road construction on highways and surface streets, and most of us try and avoid those routes, whenever possible to avoid toxic and harmful smells associated with them. We residents that live in Stone Creek will not have that chance to avoid these routes as it will be in our neighborhood. Help us to prevent our future health risk from constant road repair by doing the proper action and cancel the warehouses that bring forth heavy vehicles to damage the infrastructure and health and safety of the lives around them. Also, have a great idea for your nice little land of where you want to build that library. You can do it in the Stone Creek area, because that's perfectly slated. Also wanted to point out, I took a picture of a vehicle that was on North Mather shortly after the signs were posted that says no commercial vehicles. It stopped right there. So that kind of just proves the fact that signs don't mean trucks will follow the postings. Amplify this to the residential streets, and you'll have more issues. I'd never want to see a child's life in danger due to posted signs being ignored, which would happen on Bear Hollow, thanks to Navigator.
Thank you.
Thank you, James. Next.
Next speaker is Sarah Malone.
James, did you turn in that photo?
I did.
You did? Good. That's the right thing to do.
Hello. Thank you, Mayor, and city council members and city staff for the opportunity to speak. I'm going to be short and sweet, just planting a seed. I think it's time to start thinking of next steps regardless of how the future vote goes for the warehouses. I think that the city needs to be proactive and begin to look at memorializing some of the mitigating factors that we approach the developer in the city with in ordinance. Fontana, Riverside, other cities that have faced these horrible warehouses have enacted ordinances that seek to really enhance the neighborhoods rather than degrade them. So I ask that you please consider this for our community, and I'll speak more on this at our next meeting. Okay?
Thank you, Sarah. Marilyn?
Hi, my name's Marilyn Metzger. I live in Stone Creek. Of all the warehouse projects, Logistics Center is the least intrusive, but that doesn't mean it's good for the community or the city. Warehouse projects are like dominoes, and this is the second domino. We are fighting long and hard on this one because we didn't get a chance to fight for the first domino, which was Bold Beauty. We believe the city and developers aren't doing their due diligence in evaluating these projects. The incomplete and inaccurate environmental questionnaire submitted by Dermotti in late 2022, instead of with the initial proposal, is the clearest evidence of gross oversights of procedure and policy. That document was a joke of omissions and errors, as was the neglect of informing the neighbors of the size and scope of Bold Beauty before it was approved. The most disturbing aspect of these developments is Elliott's participation in facilitating these parcels to be something so contrary to their beautiful housing communities. That became very apparent when Stone Creek Commerce on Bear Hollow was announced just after the Veranda Homes were finished. Elliott and AT Industrial planning a half a million square feet of warehouses upwind from Navigator School, 100 feet from homes is clear evidence that money matters to Elliott, but their home buyers' health and lives and the community do not. I, for one, am done with Elliott. But I was curious about Rio de Oro, what's happening over there, so I checked out their project map. There are three land-use parcels of BP, Business Professional and Industrial. But the maps the potential buyers see, those areas are referred to as employment centers. Two parcels fall between two neighborhoods, and the third is east of the Security Park area with the neighborhood to the north. The one closest to White Rock is northwest of the Village Core. The town center, the community park, high school, and middle school campus will be built there. The largest one is on the southwest corner of International and Rancho Cordova Parkway. That sounded really familiar to me because at one point I saw a project on the city planning map. I took a picture of it June 29, 2022, at 10 o'clock. The name of it is Project Sunrise, southwest corner of Rancho Cordova Parkway and International Drive. It is a new 625,186-square-foot, single-story warehouse distribution building with 132 dock doors, a mezzanine platform, and an office block. And the status of that project, recently approved. The Sunrise Project, what actually turned out to be the Amazon second project in Rancho Cordova. If that was constructed, that particular piece of land is directly across the street from where the new middle school and high school will be built. It is also in between the first two neighborhoods that are currently being built in Rio de Oro right now. It's an incredible intrusion. It's a massive warehouse, 24/7 operations, being promoted to buyers as an employment center. Deception isn't even the word for it. Let's be honest, Amazon pulled out or postponed this project, but we didn't do it. We want to trust.
Please wrap up your comments.
But you are making it very difficult for us to believe that you provide us with true and accurate information or really care about our lives and families. We shouldn't have to hire an attorney to protect our homes and lives from outside developers, Dermotti in Nevada, and Elliott in Arizona. It's your job to be the watchdog, the doorkeeper, and to protect, not exploit, exploit the city and betray the taxpayers and voters. And if my information is inaccurate, it's on your website.
Thank you, Marilyn. Should be pointed out that Harry Elliott is a local company and has been for three generations. Do we have more speakers?
Yes. Paul Carroll. Following Paul will be Levi Weineger. Following Levi will be Eric Weineger and Ken Cooley.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, city council members. I'm Paul Carroll, resident of Stone Creek. Our group has primarily focused on two issues over the last 10 months as we've come before you at every session. Number one, ensuring any non-residential building, including warehouses, built in Stone Creek are consistent with the Z-Spa design guidelines, guidelines that prescribe the nature of the community we bought into. Second of all, determining the environmental impact of the toxic diesel exhaust which we and our children would be exposed. On the first issue, I appreciate the lengths the council has gone to insist on the implementation of the Z-Spa guidelines. The design of the project is not yet where we would like it to be, but it has definitely made progress from the first time the city staff brought it forward with a recommendation for approval in June, two revisions ago. On the second issue, quoting from the governor's office of planning and research, CEQA requires public agencies to. public agencies to look before they leave and consider the environmental consequences of their discretionary actions. It is intended to inform government decision-makers and the public about the potential environmental effects of proposed activities and to prevent significant avoidable environmental damage, things you well know. The debate on this so far has been whether the developer legally has to tell you, the decision-makers, and us, the residents, of the potential health impacts their trucks and the trucks of other proposed warehouse projects in this complex will have. A review challenging the Bold Beauty project in air quality presented data indicating significant impacts to the environment of irritating particulate matter, PM 2.5, which was not modeled or assessed in the 1998 and 2000 EIRs, but is now required in current EIRs. Additionally, modeling done by our technical expert, Petru Plass, and presented in Gloria Smith's letter dated January 17, pointed to numerous impacts that are specific to this project that were not addressed or mitigated by any of the city's policies or standards in '98 or 2000. Yet the debate continues about whether the developer has to inform of the potential harm. This is as if they're applying for a mortgage. As a banker, you know they can't make the income, but the underwriters aren't requiring income verification, so you go ahead and approve the mortgage. I think that's what led to the mortgage meltdown. I've seen three Stone Creek neighbors in the last three years die of pancreatic cancer. We have members of our group recovering from cancer. We have other members dealing with severe respiratory limitations. We believe this project has the potential of damaging our health and the health of our children. We ask for the factual data that will either prove us wrong-
Please wrap up your comments.
... or, if the data proves us correct, to see this project stop before irreparable damage is done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Levi?
Hi, my name's Levi Weineger. I'm a Stone Creek resident. I'm going to talk about some of the technical aspects of air quality regulations. The Cleaning Air Act amendments of 1990 set forth a number of air quality goals that are implemented through the monitoring of various health-based measurement parameters. Key among them is PM 2.5, fine particles that are introduced deep into our lungs, thereby affecting key physiological conditions, including transit to the heart and brain. This has been a well-recognized issue for the health of millions of Americans. Hence, a large amount of responsibility has been placed on the states to implement regulations to reduce the emissions of this parameter. Since 1997, when PM 2.5 was introduced as a federal regulation, there have been six additional revisions to the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, many of them lowering the concentration level that communities can be exposed to. Currently, another revision with a probable lowering of the standard is under consideration. The 1997 and 2000 Z Spa EIR did not recognize these regulations, which in and of itself is a fault, as the regulation was in play around the time that the EIR was being written. Even in 2000, when the revised EIR was produced, and up to 2003, when it was certified, it did not address this key aspect of particulate pollution. In the 2000 EIR, it simply stated the current standard with no other comment. The fact that this history of health-based regulation is ignored because it was overlooked in those documents is an egregious error, one that can affect the health of the community. That Dermati attempts to sidestep this story suggests that they do not care about the facts related to community health. CEQA states that an EIR can be reopened if substantial change has occurred since it was certified. If this history of regulation is not a substantial change, then what is? No amount of dancing around decades-old agreements can change the fact that these regulations are significant factors in community health. One need only to look at the literally billions of dollars spent every year to decrease these harmful emissions. That there is an attempt to ignore these facts raises questions about the intent of the developer. I therefore implore the city council to take heed of these facts in their decisions. Thank you.
Thank you, Levi. Eric?
Good evening, everyone. I have two general comments to make tonight. Number one, the ongoing discussion regarding the warehouses can be viewed as having two general components, process or procedural and factual content. Since this whole thing has acquired the feeling of a legal dispute, I can draw from my personal experience as an expert witness in litigation to generalize. In those kinds of proceedings, the first steps consist of fact-finding and different kinds of processes, such as qualifying who will testify and what they will say. The second and more important step is in the evaluation of the merits or evaluation of the facts. Then the judge or jury evaluates those facts on their merit or their value. So far, we, the group, Citizens Group, have been presenting facts, and Dermati has been presenting process or procedure. The legal discussion around CEQA and the developer agreement does not address facts, just technicalities of what some words mean. The facts have been presented to you many times about the likely health effects, including tonight, to the community. Just look at the back of my multiple comments and other of my neighbors' comments that have been presented in the past. Now, in science, the truth of our hypothesis, according to one type of philosophy of science, consists of falsifiability. That is, can you demonstrate that an assertion or hypothesis is wrong? So to that, I ask, has anyone even tried to demonstrate that anything we have said is wrong? No. I've gone through a litany of facts the last time I spoke, and it was recognized that no one has, in fact, demonstrated that any of our facts is incorrect. So I issued a challenge. Meet us on the battlefield of facts, not process and procedure. And this I say to Dermati and developers, not to the city council, because you are the judge and the jury in this instance. Second point here is regarding fairness. This whole evaluation process, to us, seems inherently unfair. Dermati's attorney and other representatives of the developers have been given ample time in the past to present their case. The city staff has consumed undoubtedly dozens, if not hundreds, of hours in evaluating their proposal on behalf of the developer with no benefit to the residents and citizens. I know that's the way it's done everywhere, but it's unfair to the community, in our opinion. We have only three minutes to present our case to you and the world, and it's generally just not adequate. And we have done much of this work to present our information without any compensation. Indeed, we have drawn from our own pockets for the funding to hire legal and technical representation. So I simply request and respectfully call for and insist on behalf of the community group, Stone Creek Residents for Smart Growth, that we have equal time in front of you all to offer a complete and coherent presentation of our facts-
Please wrap up your comment.
... instead of piecemeal bits submitted under time pressure like we are doing now. It is only fair to your constituents. We expect to have legal representation on March 6 to present our view of this affair, and since Mr. Kuhn has already and probably will again be graced with as much time as he needs, at a minimum, we deserve the same courtesy. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Ken Cooley?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Council members. I guess I'm the odd man out. I'm actually here tonight thinking about what it was like to become a part of the founder of this city, and I view this proposal in a very positive light. When Sidney and I first moved to Rancho Cordova, we lived in a duplex at the corner of Mills Station and Mather Field. So that was right. We backed up to Croydon, if you put that in your mind, kitty corner of the Doolittle Rail. That's where Sidney and I started in '77. And I've always had a concern that if we grow as one city, that we reflect improvement for the entire community. Going back to when the city formed in 2002, that ticked our census, the 2000 census revealed that half of our census tracts in the newly-formed city were low in modern income, and they all ringed Mather and Highway 50 behind Sunny's Market, behind what is now the vet facility down East La Loma. Croteau Ghetto, as my kids, when they went to Cordova, referred to it. And we have lots of jobs at Rancho Cordova that are more upscale, white-collar jobs. That's these large footprint offices that came in after the base closed because we had fiber optic cable, and let them develop an internet-based business models. So we have a lot of those sorts of jobs, but we have plenty of residents who probably are not a great fit for those jobs. And what has the city done? Actually, since we became a city, they have improved mobility around this area, notwithstanding remarks that I heard previously. Zinfandel punched through, North Mather connected to Mather Boulevard, Fumoryer connected through. The rebuild of all the interchange is actually serving Rancho Cordova, Mather, Zinfandel, even out to Hazel. International, we jumped the canal. We use federal funds to rebuild our commercial arterials. So we actually had a problem in Rancho Cordova. We've always been jobs right in the midst of housing and people. That's why we had a three-to-one jobs-housing ratio when we formed the city, when Elk Grove had half a job. So we have been, from the start, a city that intermingled jobs and housing. And to me, I actually think this type of logistics work is a kind of job that would be accessible to our most low and modern-income residents. And I think of you, Garrett. I saw you, I think, during the airshow on an early morning precinct, walking on Olson Avenue, Olson Drive, out in this area, and I honor you for that. Getting out and mixing up with people in these neighborhoods, I think, is a very important presence, Mr. Mayor. I remember as I drove by. But I just feel that this is a profound moment when the city has the opportunity to bring a class of job that is accessible even by bike.
Please wrap up your comments.
Riverbend Park, Hagan Park, the Dave Roberts Field are all three miles from the Logistics Center site, and this city has built the bike trails to allow people to connect. They don't even need a car. They could hop on a bike and come to these jobs, be employed, earn good pay and benefits.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you very much. I urge your approval.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Those are all the speaker cards that I have. I do have one hand that is raised in Zoom. Barbara, I'm going to go ahead and mute you, and you'll have up to three minutes to speak.
Sorry, can you hear me okay? Sorry, I had a thing pop up on my Zoom.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. First, I'll be brief, but first I just want to say, wow, Mr. Cooley, you just lost my vote. But then moving on to what I had planned on saying, so, dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members, I know you've been placed in a very difficult position in regards to the Stone Creek warehouse proposals. I would like to thank you for all your continued diligence in driving towards the best possible outcome and solution for the impact, for all the impacted parties. I know you're in a tough spot, and I just want to say thank you for everything you're doing. That's all.
Thank you, Barbara. We appreciate it.
Anybody else?
The City Clerk's Office also received a number of emails, and I'd like to just read these names. They have been distributed to the City Council. They have been made available to the public on the website, and they are also printed in the binder in the back of the council chambers. Nancy Lacosse, Jonathan Lacosse, Marilyn Metzger, Paul Carroll, Kate Carroll, Valerie Nipschild, and Jennifer Garcia.
Okay, thank you. We need a motion to continue this to March 6.
No move.
Second.
Thank you, Siri. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Yep.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Councilmember Terry?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Sander?
Aye.
Mayor Budge?
Yes, thank you. I should officially close the public hearing. Okay, we're going on to regular calendar items.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just to clarify, you weren't closing, you were continuing the public hearing.
You're right. Oh, good point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Okay, Stacey, you want to read item 12.1?
Yes. 12.1 is Mills Crossing Project Update.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the City Council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department, and we're pleased this evening, after a lot of collaboration and outreach, to be at this point, and I'd like to introduce Corin Crawford, who is going to give us more information on progress to date and next steps.
Corin must be remote.
Corin is joining us remotely.
Yes, I am remote. Hello, all. And thank you, Albert, and Mayor Budge, and Vice Mayor Sander, council members. It's great to see you once again, and the team and I are really excited to share with you these updates. I'm going to share my screen for the project itself. So yeah, this is an update presentation on the progress that we've been making and that we continue to make. After this brief introduction, today's agenda covers community engagement. We're going to start off with community engagement and the activities that we've got planned for the year with respect to the project and how we're going to outreach within the community. I'll go into a section in brief that provides a project overview of the work that we've been doing. This is really meant to be a very fast slideshow, so to speak, of visual depiction of the progress on the project. Then the design team is going to focus and give you a bit more about the progress they've been making, and then we'll go into next steps. But before we dive in, I wanted to really just emphasize the fact that the visuals that are a part of this presentation and the concept updates are simply not etched in stone. We really view this phase of the project and the work as we're deepening the work, but we're doing so in a way that starts and continues a dialogue with the city, the council, the community, and these visuals in this update is really a nice first step into having that conversation. So diving into the introduction, council approved the concept master plan and our predevelopment in Q3 of 2022 of last year for Mills Crossing, a mixed-use, transit-oriented development with two major overarching goals, one being, you know, providing a significant community amenity, and the other stimulating economic development along the Pulson Boulevard corridor. And so as such, all the elements that you see as part of the project, the housing, the community commercial facilities, the open space, are all in service of these dual purposes, and each element of the project, we can articulate how each element really serves a dual purpose to those ends. So today, in this update, what we hope to accomplish really is quite simple. Two things, really, is to provide this update, and this update really is about what we've been up to, and that's really captured along the lines of five kind of work streams. And then to receive feedback as we work towards a May 2023 design shret. This, again, you'll hear it time and time again, that, you know, this presentation really is teeing up this May 2023 design shret and a couple of community workshops that we'll have between now and then. The five work streams, you'll hear it again, they're a lot through the presentation, it kind of anchors the presentation. They are process and approvals, like our overall schedule and CEQA, design and engineering, project finance, community engagement, and operations and occupancy, what it's like to operate the facility, who are our programming partners, who are the occupants using the space itself. And so really, just diving into community outreach, we've hired AIM Consulting, Katie DeMaio and Gladys Cornell, who are here virtually to answer any questions about the set of activities that we've got planned, but essentially, we've got a fully robust outreach plan that spans the rest of the year with design shrets, pop-up workshops, community workshops, which are like mini shrets, and a lot of electronic communication channels like surveys and social media videos, phone lines, for community members to continue to be involved in the project. And so this is what it looks like on a year basis, over the year- And so this is what it looks like on a year basis. Over the year, we've got workshops and sharettes and pop-up workshops planned, you know, within each quarter, within each month, all throughout the year. And the design sharette, which we're really excited about, leading up to May, will really cover these four, five, you know, five topics. One of which I think that the council will be very pleased to hear about is the project name. We're going to revisit the project name, really drawing from the history of the site, what the design looks like, a couple of different aspects to really have the community and council and a broad set of stakeholders weigh in on the name. We'll cover design, character, outdoor events, programming, housing opportunities, and how to stay involved moving forward. So this is a shotgun section. I'll just go through it really quickly. These slides are here as backup for me to reference and for the team to reference with any questions coming up. But, you know, going back to the work streams, we started with EIR and that EIR process was initiated in late 2022 and it's anticipated to be 12 months. The EIR process is sort of an umbrella over some of the other activities that we're going to be doing in parallel with the EIR, which we expect to accomplish before EIR certification with the thought that that would be done in Q4 of 2023. We and the design team really looked at the site in 360-degree views. And these 360-degree views really allow us to look at every nook and cranny of the project, to see all of these great space opportunities that exist both outside and indoors for all the different space users. And that's really driving our design thinking as we move forward. We, you know, we've got our base site plan, but then there's some of some aspects of the development and the approvals process really called for potential tweaks to those, that master plan. So we have one and potentially more for consideration down the road for different tweaks. And this one is depicting a different configuration of the open space. The really fun conversation, and I know people have been chomping at the bit to really, let's talk about the architectural character along the spectrum from historical to contemporary to forward-looking, what do these buildings actually look like? What kind of building skin are we looking at? What kind of building articulation are we talking about? And is that uniform across the various project components, from the art center to the community commercial facilities to the community health center? And then we've been refining the buildings, so going from these blocks to more articulated buildings that are actually driven by what's going on inside of the buildings. Like, these are some examples of the space requirements of the various spaces that would be a part of the art center and how those are working within the boxes, you know, of the site plan. So we're really getting granular and that's same is true for the community commercial. From a project financing standpoint, we've won two grants, $7.5 million to augment the city's investment. And we have actively applied for 24, you know, $24 million in addition, in additional grants and new market tax credits and are still targeting another $9 million of other potential grant applications. This project has just received a lot of kudos and interest from grant-making agencies and tax credit investors. We talked about community engagement and then lastly, the anchor tenants, who's going to be using these spaces. And a really nice indicator of a project that looks to be successful is that, you know, sort of, you know, in red there, the red boxes are showing users and partnerships that are occupying significant amounts of space from, you know, a 25,000-square-foot office user, which is, you know, unheard of in today's office environment. But this project is really attracting that and a 20,000-square-foot community health center, a commercial kitchen, as well as numerous users of the Black Box Theater itself. And so just to recap, these are the work streams and the different pieces of work that we're really emphasizing over the year to come with the umbrella as CEQA. And I'll pass it off to Abby and Jeremy from LPA, Abby from Rios, to get into a little bit more depth into the design.
Thanks, Corin. I'm Abby. I am with Rios and we are focusing on the master planning and the outdoor landscape design for the project. Pleased to be here with you tonight. Before I dive into a slightly more detailed look at some of the design refinements we've been working on, I just wanted to remind everyone that the designs remain conceptual. And by that, I mean that there's some really important work to be done in the coming months, especially working with the Rancho de la Community, city council, city staff, to really refine what exact types of spaces and character of spaces do people want to see in this project. Over the next coming months, oh, sorry, over the last few months, we've been working to refine the site plan, which was previously approved a little over a year ago. And some of the primary inputs in that refinement have been the CEQA process. So we've applied for CEQA and started receiving some comments back. So that's been an important step, program verification. So Jeremy will speak more about this, but we've been getting more detailed about what we're shown previously as these sort of blocks, trying to think about what types of uses should go where and approximately how big should they be. Now it's been the time to get more detailed about that. And so he'll speak about that in a minute. Community engagement, as Corin mentioned, we're really excited for some upcoming workshops and then the big May sharette as opportunities to dive into some of these design questions with all of you. And then lastly, landscape outdoor program verification. So by that, I mean, in these amazing new green and plaza spaces, what types of outdoor features and elements would be best suited for this amazing project? So that could be anything from shade structures to obviously green implanted spaces or something more specialty like a water feature. So one quick example of some of the site refinements we've been doing is this one here, where again, we've been using those inputs to make tweaks on the previously approved master plan. And one thing you'll see here is we're looking at, if we rearrange some of those orange townhomes, we can allow the two existing amazing oak trees on site to become more integrated in the project green towards the north of the site. And this is another view of that, of that same design refinement and showing some of the early thinking we're doing to think about how these different outdoor spaces can be really unique, work together, but have different characters. So the yellow could be a more activated, really active and fun lively plaza with different events and outdoor dining and pop-ups, et cetera. And then the green spaces could be much more heavily planted and shaded areas for outdoor gathering and quiet relaxation. Just, we wanted to include a few photos of some of those different types of outdoor spaces I mentioned. So there are a lot of really exciting opportunities for ways to make these outdoor spaces just as incredible as the new buildings. And so these are the types of topics we'll be talking about in the May sharette.
Thank you, Abby. Yeah, thank you, Abby. My name is Jeremy Hart. I'm an architect with LPA, leading the design team for, from the architectural side. So while Abby and the Rios team are really taking a hard look from the outside in, we're doing just the exact opposite. We're looking from the inside out. And we're starting to take those big blocks that were developed in the program or in the master planning stage and what was approved to review for CEQA. And we're starting to refine those blocks. Think about how the different way those blocks can start to be separated. And as we, as we meet with users and define program, we're really starting to bring definition and practicality to the building, letting the buildings respond to the actual programmatic functions that are, that are occurring. How is circulation working? How are we connecting buildings into parking, into public rights of way? And having the buildings kind of work together as a whole. And so that, that process really begins with us, with us understanding the program. And so, you know, it's with such a great mixed-use development site, there's lots of different program elements from the art center. You know, we were starting to dive in and meet with users and understand how the different parts and pieces are coming together. Is it a black box? What kind of support spaces does the theater need? Or if we look at the next slide, you know, we're diving into some of those community and commercial spaces. What types of spaces do you need here? What kinds of support spaces need to support those spaces? Is it a STEM lab or is it a teaching kitchen or a cooking kitchen? Are there community gathering spaces? And so for each of the different program types, we're really digging in to understand how the program works, how many people that supports, and how those different spaces might start to be configured. And that is starting to inform the overall design of the process, you know, is there a big event hall? How many people does that seat? And so as we, as we answer these questions in that programming process, the buildings are taking shape and they're refining, they're becoming a little more detailed, even down to, you know, what kind of offerings will the health and wellness clinic provide? Understanding what types of spaces they're bringing in and even how does the parking structure start to connect and relate across the campus. We want to make sure all the parts and pieces are fitting together, working well on, on the campus. And then we're informing back to the overall master plan that Abby and the Rios team are working on. But really, if we could go to the next slide, I think the thing that everyone's really excited about, as Corin alluded to, is understanding what does the building want to look like? Are we going to rely on traditional and historical references? Will it be very contemporary and of its time? Will sustain, how much of a card will sustainability play? Do we want to play up those features? Or does the project really want to be progressive and forward-thinking? And so we're going to, in the community outreach process, really take a deep dive. We're going to show a lot of images, ask lots of questions, and with the community and with your input and feedback, start to set a lot of goals around what the character of the architecture wants to be. We'll even ask very kind of leading questions, you know, what is it about that image you like? Does, do you like the people spaces that it creates? Is the materiality? Is it the openness and the transparency and the way that the architecture comes together? So that when we ultimately do come back to you with a conceptual design of a project, we have lots of really valid and solid reasons that we can lean back to and we can point, this is what we heard from the community, these are the types of images we respond to, and you'll see how the architecture responds to all that feedback.
Thank you both. That was an excellent update. So next steps, I'll keep it short. Really, next steps, again, we're just highlighting the process. You know, we have some really critical pieces of work, really formative pieces of work that we're currently doing and focusing on throughout this year that really just all drive towards a feasible project from approvals to design to financing and outreach. And the truth be told, to the programming and the program partners that are there. And we're just really looking forward to May. The design sharette is organized throughout the team and really led by AIM Consulting is going to be, you know, like a half-day event, you know, two, three, three and a half hours of getting and rolling up our sleeves with council and community and a broader set of stakeholders to really, you know, really take a much deeper dive into the project and how all the different stakeholders relate to it and, and, and gain that input and feedback along the lines of what the name is, what the character is, you know, all these types of issues that we're talking about here. And I think maybe the most important is that the one at the very bottom, how to stay involved. So this is a process that is iterative and it will continually seek and gather feedback and continue to be informed by it. It makes it a better project and also it's just something that we're really thrilled to be working on. And I'll stop there and turn it over for any questions.
Thank you, Corin. So Albert, did you all have something to add?
Back to you, Mayor. We did not.
Okay, then let's ask if we have any questions for the design team.
Corin, the only question I had was, and I'm kind of harkening back to the original pitch meetings that we had in the other room here, and we were all in person, so I know it was a long time ago. But when you talk about pop-up sharettes or something along those lines, I remembered that part of, I think it was your pitch, was the pop-up events that we might get to do. And I know with the pandemic and a lot of other things, it was very hard to hold public events in the last couple of years, obviously. But I really hope that there's a way to incorporate that plan or that idea at least. I know we've, I know we had a Burning Man exhibit in the last year or so. I think we even had it during the pandemic out at the mine shaft at one point. But things along those lines where we can actually kind of draw people, one, that are walking distance to there, but also just draw people there to start not only giving input about what the event's going to be, but just drawing them to that space. And I think, you know, beyond, again, just the people that are right there or that, you know, come to sharettes on a regular basis. Because I think, you know, there are people that know how to be heard in this city. We heard from a lot of them today, and I'm sure they're going to be engaged in this project too. But how do we get those people that, that have never been to that site, or they've just driven by it, or they get their car worked on down the street or something like that? But one of the things was beyond kind of pop-up, you're calling it a workshop, and maybe, maybe that's what you meant, but some more public events that are just getting people to go there, I think would be fantastic. And I know that that was one of the things that I thought really set your proposal apart from some of the other ones that we heard. I know the other development team that had worked on the Pearl in, in...
Portland.
No. Where was the last NLC before we shut down?
San Antonio.
San Antonio, thank you. Corin said that, huh? You knew. And comparing those two, but when you talk about the pop-up events, I really got excited about that. So is that what you're envisioning with the workshops or is that...
Well, certainly. So I think one of the things that really speaks to some of the ideas that we have and presented along the lines of our project. We really talked about how does human-centered design play out in development projects? And, and this, and on the far right, this community celebration at the site is, is thought of as something as that, right? Where this would be something where we actually seek to activate the site, where we could hold a design sharette on the site itself. And, you know, you might have some real temporary turf and a segment of the site that people can come to. And we dress it up in a way that creates a celebration of the project onsite itself. And that starts to build a relationship with the community, with the site itself. And it starts to test out, and this is where this human-centered design principle starts to arise, where we start to test out certain things about the community interacting with the site itself. Where are people parking? You know, how are people generally responding to the site itself? What's the crossing? How does that piece function? How many people use auto? How many people use a light rail to get there? So there are a lot of different things that we can see and view, and I think the community celebration really captures that. And that is one of several, you know, types of ideas that, that would exist, you know, to actually bring the site to life, so to speak.
Okay, yeah. I would just throw in there as a suggestion, public art of some way and maybe working with our arts community. And then also, we've had a pretty thriving music and performing art space in the last year or two, I think. We have some conversations about other funding that we might be doing in our next budget. But I think it'd be really interesting to see if there's a way to draw outdoor public theater, outdoor public arts as, as part of this. And maybe that's expansion and doing some outdoor stuff from the MAC or other things like that, or River City Band or other things that just draw people. And again, yes, we want to capture their thoughts when we get them there, but let's... And I love the idea of a community celebration, but if there's an opportunity to do more of those, I guess I'm looking over at our city manager too and saying, you know, if this is something that we can spend some money on this year, or Measure H, Measure R, to do some unique events at that site. And again, learn how we can do it. Because one of the really cool things about this site is you could rely on parking at Target and KP International and getting them back over by utilizing light rail, which is something that I think our own residents don't utilize nearly as much as people that are passing through or that are coming here to work. So, yeah, no, this is great. It just, when I saw that pop up, it just reminded me that beyond just workshops and sharettes as part of the pop-up, that I hope we can also expand it to more, you know, more than maybe one community celebration this year in some way. But thanks. That's all the questions I had.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett?
First of all, great work on getting already some funding for the, our soon-to-be renamed something. Not going to just, whatever. New name immediately. The second thing is, I really like Donald's idea, which is... The second thing is, I really like Donald's idea, which is great. Yeah, but it says pop up, but like, take it to another level, like, get the different villages, like Lincoln Village, the other villages in the area to get engaged. Do the pop up there so we can help bring, drive community in, do some sort of entertainment, and then also tie it to the sports. I mean, we have baseball getting ready to come up. That's, you know, hundreds of parents in the community, and we can make an event out of it, you know, even at the end of the year, and then have one of these pop ups there. Could really get people started to get engaged and excited about this. And anytime a sports team or league or something like that, let's try to center it around the city and see if we can do that. And if we can tie and even talk to what's the the Mockingbird Hummingbird Hummingbird Group about doing some plays outside? And having them engaged with to talk about the space that I really think they need to work out of, even though we're building the the space. But that kind of thing about having that and free show and the community, the city eats the cost, but then we have the threat, and that's how we kind of cage it at the same time. I think that'd be really cool. So let's 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 throw those up, because the more engagement we can get, more excitement and buzz, we can get around this amazing community center. Civic amenities building with lots of squares. I think that's the next step for intro. So that's where I'm at.
I think most of it has been covered by your council members. So thank you for the great presentation. The one I wanted to ask was, there was a slide on architectural character where we were chomping at the bit to see how it looks like. So are those images associated with the kind of names you have below? So is that glass screen that you have, is that progressive forward thinking? And is like, is the very first image, is that like a traditional image?
Jeremy, how about you feel that?
Sure. So the images we're showing, we're we're just pulling some representative example images. We are certainly going to be pulling many, many more. You know, I I guess I would say, don't get overly connected to anything you see here. We're just trying to pick some emblematic things, you know. Does it want to have some sort of natural stone and, you know, wood beams? Or does it want to be all glassy? We're going to ask lots of questions in lots of different categories.
Got it. I was just wondering, is like a progressive forward thinking, that glass image, is that it or just no relation?
It it would, if we're if we're talking about progressive and more forward thinking, does it have a more modern feel? I think that's the the idea that we're trying to convey. But like I said, we're going to pull lots of images in that category.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thanks, Siri. David?
I think my colleagues have made some great comments, but I'm really excited, not only over the name change to whatever that may be, but over the the progress of this. I appreciate the outreach we have planned. That's going forward to the neighbors and and get as much input as we can from them about it. I think we've made great success here on finding dollars to add to the project, as well as sort of scoped who some tenants might be. I assume there's even discussions going on, making some sort of arrangements with them, those tenants, and helping to us to figure out how this will pencil in the end, what the costs will be like, what the ongoing costs will be like, what the process will be like, what the management requirements will be, who the partners are. I'm not privy to any of that. I'm not sure all the city staff is, but some of us probably are to those discussions. So I'm happy that those are going forward as well. And I just look, this is going to be a great year to sort of set and discover what the future of this site's going to be. So that's exciting. Thank you for your work.
I agree. I think we all, I think we all agree with with everything that's been said, except that I actually like the name Mills Crossing, so so there. However, and I appreciate the fact that you have described these three photos we're looking at in particular terms. But the one on the right reminds me of the Winsper Opera House in Dallas, which is one of my two favorite public performance buildings. And the other one doesn't count because it's the Opera House in Santa Fe, and that one is so classically territorial, western desert territorial. It just fits into its, it fits into its setting as if it were a glove on a hand. And unfortunately, that kind of thing doesn't have any relativity to us because we don't have a specific geographic character to point to. So for us, kind of the the design theme, as much as Siri says, I completely agree with you. We're all eager to get down to the nitty gritty of what does this thing look like? But we're sort of a wide open, truly a wide open canvas here because we don't have any specific design theme that is applicable, just automatically historically applicable, so. So Stacy, do we have public comment?
Yes, we have public comment.
Okay.
So I'm going to go ahead and start with the speaker cards that I've received. We'll start with James Garcia. Following James Garcia will be Tara Colvin-Bach and then Helen Wayland-Bishaw.
Okay, James.
Hello, Council. I'm James Garcia, resident of Stone Creek. I just wanted to ask a couple of different questions about this project site. Who's actually going to pay the bill ultimately? It kind of seems like it's a field of dream style design going on here. We have some ideas of some arts going to go in, possibly some office space, health. But who's going to pay those bills, especially since right now, many of the proposed tenants, such as the arts, we're already giving them funds to operate. So we're going to, are we going to continue to pay their rent, so to speak, on this place? Are we going, as a city, going to get our funds back, other than just taxes? There's a lot of different land uses there. You have to consider space. Mentioned that you can park at Target and come on down by light rail, but not everybody has that luxury or wants to do that. They love to park. Think of the Golden One Center downtown Sacramento. It's hard. You have parking garages all over the place. In this case, you have a small, limited parking structure, but you also have apartments that you're going to be building on the same property. They're going to have some residents, they're going to have guests, parking needs. The current residents that live on the streets right now are already complaining about their homes being blocked by the students at the university right next to it. You have a lot of different things that you have to consider with this. Is it going to be operated 24 by seven by permit use in that parking structure? Things of that nature. Again, it's just a lot of questions. The oak tree, love the fact that you mentioned, yes, we want to redesign the whole layout to support keeping those oak trees. Definitely support that, because again, don't want them taken down. They're lovely. So kind of just really think about the whole design. How are we as a city going to benefit from this? There's parking across the way at the light rail station, but not, everyone wants to walk across that dangerous street. Have you ever tried to drive down Matherfield Road? When light rail's crossing and everyone else, they're making a lot of crazy turns, going in and out, weaving in and out of people, trying to beat the actual guardrails. It's not the safest, most walkable feature. How about including bark? They want to come, they want to have bike parking if you're going to do this. So is that in this design? Think of the different uses of what we are spending and what's going to be the benefit. Are we going to be ongoing landlords? Or are we turning this over, build it, turn it over, hands off? Or are we going to have a lifelong bill as a resident here? Thank you.
Thank you, James. It sounds like we'll see you at all the the charrettes and workshops. Tara?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city attorney, city manager and staff. I'm excited about this. This is a great thing. And I just had a couple of things that I just wanted to mention is for that multifamily, at first in the design, it was going to be five stories. Now it looks in the design, it's going to be four stories. And if anybody goes through down the Loma, it goes down two stories. So that building is going to look like a monolith. And I don't know how to fix that, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. Maybe, you know, I don't know how to change that. I really like what Donald Terry said about the pop up. And I wanted to expand on that because I think when we first talked about that, we talked about residential and below it would be retail, like restaurants or something like that. But we really didn't think restaurants would really go very well because they, you know, they they're cyclical and they might not work. They might be abandoned, you know, because of how the restaurant industry is. So I was hoping that since we abandoned that, that we have something like places for food trucks or pop up restaurants? Because we talked about, we want people to engage, we want people there. Well, food, people need to eat, right? And I don't see anything in the design, maybe I'm missing something. But I know there's going to be a retail section and it's close to the college, so maybe it'll be restaurants. But I'm thinking, don't we want to help the small businesses, those little guys? Like the ones across the street from on the Loma, they got a food tent there. And everybody on next door says it's the best place to get tacos in town. Okay, so it's just right there in an auto shop area. Oops, sorry. And and so can we put that in there somehow? Like have a place for these up and coming places? But I don't see that in the design because those roads just go straight through. I don't see parking spots or or a place where people could park or put tents outside of being on the grass. So that's just my idea. Okay. And another thing is, we need two kitchens. I don't know if there's two kitchens. We need two kitchens because there's, we want to have fun. And there are so many people that want to have events, all the nonprofits and everything. So that's just my idea. And and walls that can be moved. I'm hoping that's part of the design. We've been talking about that, having flexibility. And another thing I hadn't heard too much about is security. Are we going to have lighting everywhere on there so there's not dark spaces to have the people that live there, as well as the people that attend there?
Please wrap up your comment.
Be safe and feel safe. Thank you.
Thanks, Tara. It sounds like we'll see you at the workshops and charrettes also.
Me again. I've been going to the meetings on this project, and what I'm really thrilled about is my two oak trees are there. Thank you. I think we need to look at some other ideas. We're a culturally diverse community. We need to forward think and make sure we have events that's are traditional. Certain time of the year, this this ethnic group is presenting something there where we showcase the cultural diversity. We, back east, I'm from Baltimore, Maryland, in Inner Harbor. In the late summer, early fall, we would have one weekend for the Japanese cultural and each and the Irish and the Polish. Because those communities traditionally, years ago, you lived in the neighborhood where you your heritage was from. So I think this center can expand and bring us focal point for all the cultures we have in the city. I'm a little disappointed because I don't see the dog park. We have apartments for four floors high. There there's dogs, but you need a dog park. Because the people I think that are really going to come to this and and live in the area are not going, they're going to have the dogs as their children. And their dogs need a playground. And I keep talking about this, but it hasn't made it onto the program. I think that's real important. I do believe that each time I see this coming up, the revisions, I I believe they're listening to the community more on this project, and I believe it will go further. I do think that when we start looking at these structures, we need to think in the future. We need to determine what is that area going to look like, so we pick the right structures. With that said, it's looking better, but I will attend all the other meetings. Thank you.
We'll look forward to your involvement. Thank you, Helen. Anybody else?
Those are all the speaker cards that I have. I'm looking at Zoom, and I do not see any hands that are raised.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move on to our next item then. And we'll move on to 12.2. Stacy, you want to read the title of that one?
12.2 is the Proposed Neighborhood Traffic Management Program, Phase Five. Six, Phase Six.
Yeah. Albert?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Budge and members of the council. Albert Stricker with the Public Works Department, and this evening, we're pleased to provide a brief presentation on the current status of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Project. And this evening, we're going to presenting the a high level overview of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program process, and then locations with proposed work to be done and receive input from the city council. And I'd like to introduce Don Smith, who is a senior engineer with Willden, who is assisting us with this project.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor Budge and council members. To start with the background, the NTMP program is a means of providing residents with a way of bringing traffic calming. Sorry, I'm sorry about that. To provide residents with a means of bringing traffic calming requests to Public Works. It also established the NTSC, the Neighborhood Transportation Safety Committee, which reviews these requests. The NTSC is made up of one member of the fire department, one member of the police department, three residents and city staff. It also set the thresholds for balloting to know if we should move forward with any traffic calming measures in each neighborhood. We asked that 25% of all residents who would be affected by this reply to the mail-in ballot with a 67 approval rating before we'd move forward. The types of treatments, these are the typical treatments that we're looking to use. There's more, but our main six are high visibility crosswalks, solar powered crossing signs, enhanced striping, bulb outs, speed humps and lumps, and speed feedback signs. So what does this mean for our community? Slower vehicles driving through neighborhood areas, better pedestrian connections between neighborhoods in the major areas, and in general, safe safer neighborhoods. The goal being a safe, inviting and livable community for all of us. Now we can take a look at our citywide project locations. As you can see, this particular group does span most of the city with five on the west side and two on the south and east corner. We'll move to the first one of Dawes Street and Malaga Way, where we propose bulb outs at all four corners and a high visibility crosswalk connecting all of those corners. We'll move to the next one on Eddington Drive, where we would propose speed limit signs at the very beginning, a speed feedback sign, and one speed lump signer, or one, sorry, one speed lump. Next, we'll move to Ellenwood Avenue, where we propose one speed lump between Gould and Glennmore Drive. I'm sorry, it looks like we have an incorrect map up here, but for Justinian Drive, I'll describe it all out to you. On Justinian Drive, from Sunrise to Anatolia, we're proposing one speed hump, bulb outs that connect to to Heron Park, a high visibility crosswalk at that location, and enhanced striping over that stretch for a shared bike and parking lane.
Okay, so that that should be Justinian, wait.
Yes, sorry, this is the wrong map. We can
It's in the staff report. It's correct in the staff report.
Yes, sorry about that one.
What staff report do you have?
I got it out of the staff report.
Oh, did you print out the staff report?
Yeah.
Okay. No, it's the online version.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Oh, right there. Okay, yeah. That was right here by the park.
Yeah.
Okay. And you want bulb outs there? Say say what you want again.
We want bulb outs at the corner heading into Heron Park and a enhanced crosswalk there. side, which will slow down traffic to allow pedestrians to cross into the park. Onto the next one, Mills Tower Drive. We're looking to have two speed humps, enhanced striping across the whole distance, which would have a biking, a bike lane and a parking lane, and two speed limit signs at the entrances. Onto the next one, which is West Laloma Drive. We're looking for two speed humps, two bulbouts at the intersections, and a speed limit sign on the south end.
So just past the end of the north part of this map, there's already a hump there and a couple other things, right? As we, as you get closer to the park?
That's correct.
But there, we we've put nothing in in between Folsom and there? This is, this is all going to be new?
This is all going to be new. There is an existing raised crosswalk.
Okay.
Right in front of the park there, but the highlighted in in red there and then the speed limit sign at the bottom, those are all new proposed.
And then, and well, and the bulbouts too. Okay, I got you.
And just for my.
Two more speed humps.
Because a lot of people in my community ask, or we ask this, this is usually, this gets your attention when we get the community, about 25 members, or is this just you overviewing what needs to happen and what you feel like the best worst condition is? So what is the best way? Because I know people also want to start getting crosswalks over on, you know, Lincoln Village and some other areas and some bumps. How do we, how do they quicken that up? What's the best way?
The best way for them is to contact city staff and we can help them through the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program.
Okay.
And essentially, that starts out with getting signatures from a few neighborhood members and they submit that to us and and that's the start to going through the entire program. But I would recommend the easiest thing is they can contact city staff and we can tell them the, help them through the whole process.
There's an application and I think it's a minimum of 10 signatures.
Yeah, they were, they were putting that together. I was just wondering.
And a few years ago, though, we had a backlog of, what, David? 10 projects that we funded out of Measure H where we just went in and said, take X amount from the transportation dollars, like what were the numbers that are approved that have been been paid for? And we just paid for all of them one year because we had a handful that were just kind of, you know, we'll do two this year and two next year and three, and then we just said, just do them all and clear them out. So how many, do we have any other pending that have been approved?
We do have pending. Some of them are in the process, so they haven't gone through the Neighborhood Traffic Safety Committee.
Right.
But we do expect that we have about half a dozen to a dozen in the works right now. It is not fully funded at this time, but we're, we're still looking at available funds that can, that can pay for this and looking for options of of how we can fully fund it.
Because some of them aren't just like, I want a speed bump here, which, you know, costs, you know, X amount. Some of them could be, I mean, I'm guessing the the West Laloma one, that's a pretty big one with two of these and extra signs and everything else that depending on what they ask for, it can be a very expensive idea, too. But we did make a point a while, a few years ago of clearing out everything that had actually gone through the process.
Okay, and you have one more?
Yes, and the last one is on Zinfandel Drive, just north of Folsom. We have one speed hump as you head into the residential neighborhood.
Okay, because you do have two steep speed bumps on Zinfandel already, one around Barbera or so and one out around Segovia. Okay.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, super. And of course, as we all remember, that was our first sidewalk installation project.
And just to wrap up, to to give you an idea of the next steps we would be taking is we'll incorporate any input provided by city council. And our next step is to engage a designer and move forward with design. And the, we would bring this back to city council next for approval of a construction contract, which we expect would be towards the end of this year.
Super. Thank you, Albert. Donald, any further comments or questions?
No, not on these.
Garrett?
No, I I have a bunch of people in the community. There's, there's so much growth that's going on right now, they don't quite know. Own, no one knows, most of them come to me, they're just, I want speed bumps. And I was just talking with Donald, not everybody, you don't always need a speed bump, but they don't know what they know. They just know that the condition of their house has now gotten more dangerous, you know, like when we added the sprouts and stuff. So they're like, well, how do we make us safer because we're starting to see like almost accidents? And is there something that the city can do on the, on the driving side because we're putting the amenity there? Is it time for like a speed bump or striping was another idea, something like that? So I told them, I was like, I think you go get the 25 people and then you show up and you yell at Albert and it's good to go. But no, I, we'll have them come before you, they'll call in and say, you know, what do we need to do to get the city out here to do a traffic study or something like that?
Yeah, we, I, I think a lot of us have experienced, you know, certain instances throughout the city where, you know, the the resident has, has a solution that doesn't necessarily fit the problem. So you say speed bump, it's not really speeding, it's that there's 1,000 cars going by my house at this time of day or certain things. And, you know, we've had proposals of closing streets to the public and other things like that that aren't necessarily legal. And so I, I, I have always encouraged folks that when, when you see a traffic problem, contact staff and start working on it without coming in with what your solution is and try to figure out what is the best solution to address your concern. Because a lot of times, I think people gravitate towards certain solutions that aren't going to fix it, right? So in some sense, it's not speeding, which is what a speed hump or bump or whatever does. It may be different striping or speed dots or other things, but some of them, it's just, there's just a lot of cars and they don't like it. Well, some, some of us end up living on busy streets, so.
Well, the brown new roundabout we're putting at Coloma is always interesting. I'm just joking. I apologize. That was me.
Well, speed bumps also allow more modern cars to go zooming across them. And Garrett, Sprouts is a work in progress.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty obvious from all that construction over there. That's not finished.
Yeah. What, and Garrett, you make a really good point when you, you know, when we first were talking about Coloma and Chase and how we were going to redesign it, the first one I saw, like, you know, I saw the roundabout, I'm like, great, we're going to get a roundabout. And then Albert explained that that takes, that that makes it from four crosswalks to eight. So roundabouts are not pedestrian-friendly in the slightest. They're great for cars and they, and cars don't slow down, but you don't want a bunch of people going across that because if you're going, you know, if you're crossing the street from one, from, you know, this corner to this corner with your groceries, you've got to cross four different times to get across what would have been one. So it, just the, the way the, some of these things are designed, that we may love the solution and it's a terrible solution. It's not actually a solution.
That's interesting.
It's making it worse.
That's not the way they're designed on El Grove Boulevard. So.
But who's walking out near that El Grove Boulevard one?
All the people who live there.
Hmm, that doesn't look very pedestrian-friendly.
Your turn.
I just had a generic question. Would you then send to the residents that this is what we're putting and then get an agreement with them? Because I've seen, I mean, bulbouts, I've heard a lot of residents saying they really don't like bulbouts in their area or whatever the next steps are, right? So would you get approval from residents?
Thank you for that question. And leading up to this point in the process, we've conducted significant outreach with the residents, where they've had an opportunity to, to see at a schematic level what treatments are going to be used and roughly where they're going to be used. So we've received significant input with the, from the general community through community meetings. And usually through the design process, we would do a touch base with the original applicants would be the next steps that we would take.
Okay, thanks.
David?
I'm just happy to see continued progress in this. We have such a backlog around the city and so many neighborhood requests, particularly on the older side of town, where we've had things that have been dysfunctional for decades. It's nice to see a very local level concern being taken seriously and funded by the city to deal with some of these problems that make communities safer and more attractive and more vibrant. So I'm, I'm always excited to see this happen. I just wish we could do more of the faster because like the sidewalk backlog, you know, we've, we've got a lot of work to do.
Super, thank you. Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have public comment. Speaker cards from Valerie Knippschild in the council chambers and Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
Okay, Valerie.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Budge and council members and staff. I think I figured this out, Albert. We were, we were on this list for Baroque. I guess we're in a different phase. Because you sent us cards out and we saw a map of what you were going to do with the speed pumps and speed speeding on that particular road. So that's, my question is, where's our project? The second one that I'm also hearing from Albert is I want speed calming on Zinfandel at the intersection of North Mather and Baroque. Zinfandel goes through there. Last night, a truck was coming in about 9:45. I heard, or 10 o'clock, I screeched, went to my partner and said, did you hear that? Did you hear that? And it was a truck that was coming down the hill. The light turned on him, red, because somebody was turning left. And he was out almost in the middle of the intersection. So I would like to see something, oh, his brakes were squealing, that's why I heard him. I'd like to see some calming in that area. I know the cops have been out there and doing their due diligence, catching the speeders, but we need some traffic calming in there. I guess I need the 10 signatures to get anything else in like stop signs or a sidewalk on the east side of Zinfandel across from Bolden Beauty. We want a sidewalk to go up to the trail, the bike trail. I don't know if the developer does that or the city does that. Other two things I have, I think I have to get the 10 people to sign that form that's online. So, yeah, I just wanted to know where Baroque was in that list.
Thank you, Valerie.
Next speaker is Helen Wayland-Bashaw.
I'm a little amazed at what you're doing. First, I'd like Linda to explain to me how modern cars are able to travel over the speed humps and bumps better than the old ones are because most of them sit lower to the ground. And then I've talked to Micah before about between Danny's Automotive and the college, the three-way stop coming off of Folsom Boulevard. Coming from Folsom Boulevard, going between those two businesses, they speed. They don't speed coming up to Folsom Boulevard. And there's been some near misses. Near misses are where someone squeals the brakes and no one gets hit because they jump out of the way. And that's an area that needs to be addressed. And I've talked about that when I've been to the meetings for the Mill Station Crossing or whatever name we're going to call it these days, because that's a really dangerous street. I've been at Danny's when I've seen it happen. I've had somebody drive through it. They, they don't recognize it as a three-way stop. My suggestion is put a speed bump just on the one side going down from Folsom Boulevard, but we always like to go all the way across the lane. The other thing I've talked about in the past is Rod Bodre. We spent, or the feds provided us 1.6 million. We put in another 1.2 million and put that protected bicycle lane, the protected federally, this protected bicycle lane should have been in a 45 mile hour zone. I attended meetings that started in 2016 and I was told finally at the end, we need one in and yours is a best fit. Well, hello, folks. When you come out of the high end of Tierra Grande and you're going to make a right to go into the park, it's a very difficult turn. If cars are parked there, you can't see who's coming out of the park. People coming out of the park, even though it's 25 miles, fly in and out of there about 45 miles per hour. When the park is closed, they hit the gate. The gate has been rebuilt so many times. And I've seen all this because I've been at my house since 1983 for a long time. Everybody seems to think the protected bicycle lane solved our issue. It didn't solve our issue. Dave lives on the corner house, right where they do the spin outs from the East Tiffany Lane onto Rod Bodre. It's a nice big area. They do the spin outs. They don't hit the gate, we're fine. A few of them have gone down the ridge or off the levee, but it's a dangerous area. That protected bicycle lane is more of a hazard in that area than the speed bumps that I started hitting Sacramento County back in the late 80s because the way they fly in and out of that park. I'm just concerned that we need, those two areas need to be readdressed. Thank you.
Helen, you're talking about Paseo Drive?
Huh?
You're talking about Paseo Drive?
Yeah, it's very dangerous. And with the expansion of the school, going to add another phase to it and the fact that they're putting in a larger parking lot because they flipped land with the city, the students don't necessarily use it, but people trying to get into the residential area fly through that stop sign. I mean, I'm, I was amazed. I've been there so many times and I hear the brakes squeal.
Okay, so, all right, so it's a signal light at Folsom and Paseo.
Yes.
So you're talking about the, the stop sign on the street that goes?
Paseo, Paseo heads, if you make, if you're.
Paseo goes straight ahead.
Yeah.
All right. But then there's the street that turns to the left and makes a curve and goes up to parallel Paseo. Are you talking about a stop sign there?
Yeah, it's right next to the corner of the college going into Paseo and Danny's Automotive that goes to the driveway coming out of the parking lot. So what you have is people come flying through that area. It's a dangerous place.
Got it.
And, you know, we have to be proactive because once somebody gets injured or killed, you can't get them back to where they were. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor Budge, I'm looking in Zoom and I'm just letting you know I don't see any hands raised for public comment.
Okay, thank you, Stacy. All right. Anything else?
Mayor Budge, anybody that's interested, interested in being a part of the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program can call 916-851-8710, which is the main Public Works number, and let them know that they'd like us to help them through the process.
Great. Thank you, Albert.
Hey, Linda, this is Donald. I'm sorry I stepped away, but can I just make one final comment?
Yes.
Based on some of the comments we just heard. As much as some of these traffic calming measures make it a little more difficult for cars, the point of this or for people and cars to make certain turns, the point of all of this is to make it safe for pedestrians.
Right.
And that is our priority. I know we heard that when we did the cycle track and some other stuff over on Rukir and we had people that were frustrated that it was harder to make a right turn, but the point was we're trying to make it safer for kindergarteners to get to elementary school. So that's why we build these things. And while it may be inconvenient for some drivers, it's about making sure that kids and families are safe on their way to our parks and our schools and our businesses and to their homes. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Donald. Okay, then we've come to the end of our regular items, so it's time for council requests for future items. Anybody?
Recording in progress.
We're still meeting. Okay, I don't hear any. So we're going to adjourn to closed session. Stacy, you want to read the title of the closed session?
Yes, the Conference with Legal Counsel Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D2. One case relating to notice and alleged default under development agreement and 60-day period to cure logistics center project at corner of North Mather Boulevard and Bear Hollow Drive from Arthur Coon, January 25, 2023.
Super, thank you. And so we're going to adjourn to closed session and we will be back out to report, but we don't have any particular estimate of time. So, thank you all. Good night.